Did you know you can go to LibertyMutual.com to customize your car insurance so you only pay for what you need?
Yeah.
Only pay for what you need.
We got one of those new purple mattresses and it is amazing. You have to try it. Come on, this doesn't feel like memory foam. This feels amazing.
Right?
What's it? Actually, it's called Purple and it's a completely unique comfort technology. Multipliatively designed to cradle and support the human body.
Whoa.
Get free sheets and wash pillow when you buy a Purple mattress at purple.com/tv.
People across America trust Nutrisystem because we deliver your favorite foods made up here right to your door. It's convenient home delivery delicious meals and snacks to help you stay healthy. We're here for you now, saving 50% on a month of meals delivered to your door and shipping is free. Plus, get a weaker program out of shit to support your evening free. Go online or call 888-980-5000 to save 50% on a month of meals delivered to your door. You're invited to the Fox Nation debate watch party. Join John Rich, Tommy and Pete as they preview the big night and here for special guests after the action. Catch you Thursday only on Fox Nation.
Your news every hour in primetime is on News Nation on WGN America. News Nation talked to Michigan's Attorney General after news broke of the alleged plot to kidnap the governor and examined the importance of minorities for COVID vaccine trials.
If I could do this, it's good for me and it's good for everybody else.
News Nation covers your nation every night, 8 till 11 on WGN America. On WGN America on channel 82, Verizon 5 is 568 and the spectrum 126.
BMW certified, certified was a thing. I don't want to give them that tree. We have a reputation of each car is inspected and reconditioned with only original BMW cars. Something we're pretty sure this guy does too. Because when we say certified, we don't put a sticker on it. We put our reputation behind it. You see, we accept your offers today at BMW certified sales.
9/11 didn't end on 9/11. Half a million people are still at risk having been exposed to toxic dust with 68 cancers and many respiratory illnesses. And now people with those conditions are more vulnerable to the coronavirus. Thankfully, free healthcare and compensation are.
Hey Jeff, how you doing?
Good. Gavin, how are you?
Good thanks. Everything is well?
You're back on, um, on this side, right?
Uh, yes, I'm, I'm, I'm in town. That's what you mean.
Yes.
Okay. Yes, I'm back in town.
Looks like Bob's got a pink guitar today.
It does. Maybe he'll play us a couple tunes or something.
Maybe.
That'd be nice.
Who just dialed in on the phone? Who is CIA drafter A?
It's Ciro Interanti Architect.
Uh, and you are?
I'm Ciro Interanti Architect for the Albany 7 Project.
Okay, great, great. And, and just, um, I just want to rename you and your name?
Uh, first name is Ciro, last name is Interanti.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Can you spell that please?
C-I-R-O.
And the last name? Great, thank you. I'm just gonna rename you so we know who you are.
Okay. I, uh, I had the drawings, uh, PDFs I can bring up when you need them, okay?
Perfect. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. How do I mute myself?
Um, on the bottom, there should be a mute button. On the very lower left.
Uh, um, right now my screen says zoom and it says open link. Launch meeting. Wait a second, I think I have to download and then, uh, then join. Hold on.
We have a few minutes for you, you to figure it out if you, if you need, about 10 minutes.
Okay. I'll do my best.
Hello, Mr. Porter. You're on mute.
You sure you want me to unmute that thing?
Yeah, I want to know why your guitar is pink.
My guitar is pink? Which one?
The one right there. It looks pink.
Oh, that one?
Yes, that one.
I was celebrating our breast cancer month.
Okay.
No, it's a special paint job from the factory in California. See it?
Oh yeah.
Very nice.
We were hoping you were gonna play us a little tune while we were waiting. Like some elevator music?
I play for one. Which I don't have. Now I see, uh, I moved my lighting around so that I don't always look so dark and red. So I put a light down there and it's flashing up, you know, onto the guitar to finish. Okay.
Welcome Ian.
Hello, how are you?
Good. Are, are you the Ian Anstrava that has all the, a lot of the K O Ms around here?
That's awesome. Apparently.
That's not fair.
That's awesome. Uh, are you talking about running or riding?
Riding.
Awesome. That's great. That definitely, that definitely made me night.
Looks like the board's actually got a handle on this next budget sequence.
Yeah.
Minimal. Looks good. Well, I, I do not like paying a lot more than I have to, especially in situations like this.
Well, that's why we live in town of Ulster, not city of Kingston.
You got that right for a lot of reasons. That's one of them. There's some more that I'm not gonna get on, get into right now because we're gonna be on YouTube.
No, it's not recording.
Oh, excellent.
But, but we should stay away anyway.
Yeah, you know, that's the smartest thing to do because you just never know.
That's right.
And my predilection is I love a fight. But there's others who don't.
Is that called a grumpy old man?
The grumpy old man? No, no. Mick and Rocky's corner. I gotta chase a chicken. I love that movie. So what's doing in your world? Got any time in the air?
Yep.
Good. That's always a good way to clear your head.
It is.
And then when I used to actively ski and I got into the air off of a mogul, it was so exhilarating. Until I hit the ground, but that was, it was fun for a while.
Yeah, yeah. You, you worked for IBM, right Bob?
I have in the past. Yes, I have.
Yeah, we just divested, um, $19 billion part of our business.
Well, I know you're not in the microelectronics anymore.
No, the GTS services.
Really?
Yep.
I thought that was supposed to be a moneymaker. Well, it was money enough to sell it off, yeah.
Well, they, they split the company, so it's gonna be a wholly owned subsidiary like it was after 1956 consent decree required them to, to separate their services. When all of our competitors are buying up the Accentures and other services organizations, we're divesting ours, so I don't know.
Got me. It's all about pleasing the stockholders. And showing a profit.
Hasn't done that in probably seven years.
Yeah, well, they're still trying, but I just hate to think they're gonna be cutting off their right arm. And the profits as a goal, as opposed to the pursuit of goal in the long term to generate solid profits and revenues.
Yep.
But that's not the business paradigm apparently. Hasn't been even when I was there, got changed around. Biggest shock is when I got rid of the servers at Poughkeepsie. I said, what? I mean, that was supposed to be the hot thing for micro, you know, for the business, the servers, the server farms, server this, server that, server this. And then bam. Gone. I remember, um, I was at a training in East Fishkill. Or a Hazwhopper tech level three for emergency response. And, uh, helicopters start coming and we were in a cap, I don't know if you remember the East Fishkill, but it was in a big cafeteria area. We were in a small room across the hall, the other side, we looked in. All the silverware you could ever imagine. Your wife was in there catering. Pataki was coming in. They were cutting the deal to do the Microshift factory for 300 millimeter that day. Alright, and I, we're all looking over saying, can we get in here? No, we cannot get in here. Sorry. What do you guys want? You know? So he came in. I, I remember that because the whole savior for microelectronics was supposed to be the 300 millimeter. Well, I was involved in that. And that's gone. They put another building there, 323B for my line. It was supposed to go in there. All those, all the tools are in there. Never opened the doors. So, talk about wasting money.
Yeah.
I know there's write offs and depreciation. I understand that, but still. So I'm wondering if they're still getting a discount from the state of New York for doing business because it was predicated on having people in those buildings. Hiring. And they don't own them anymore.
Right, right.
And the servers too at Poughkeepsie.
Hi Andy, how are you? Jason, good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Jason.
Hi Jason.
Hey Kevin.
How's it going Kevin?
Going well Rob, thanks. How are you?
I hope it goes good for you guys there.
Yeah, it's going good.
It's going good for me. Retirement is pretty decent. I'm starting to finally begin to understand I have to enjoy it.
Yeah, I, I feel like I'm retired. I'm only running on the weekends right now, so, uh.
Oh yeah.
So I have four days, you know, but I, I'll tell you, uh, those, those three days on the weekends are all I really need. So, it's been, uh.
Is that Holiday Inn working out for you?
The what?
Holiday Inn, you getting a?
It was, um, not now, not so much, uh. But it was, hopefully it'll get back to it, but, um, with our three days running and, you know, keeping busy and the takeouts, uh. It's, it's, it's like we haven't really missed a beat thankfully.
That's good.
Um, hopefully, uh, you know, we get through this soon. Other than later and we can get back.
I, I, I enjoy this delay. It's like you finish a sentence, I'm gonna, and all of a sudden I hear you speaking. It's interesting. Reminds me of my first year in college. I don't know what anybody said. Oh, I don't have my Dodger banner up. I have to go find that.
Alright, we're gonna go ahead and get started. So I'm gonna begin recording this session. Um, if you, which means we'll record video and audio. If you don't want to be recorded, then you'll have to drop off. Okay. Uh, I call the October zoning board meeting to order. We'll go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, let me, uh. Pull up the agenda and share. Okay Gabby, can we do the roll call? I think you have to unmute Gabby. Is Gabby here? Uh, oh yeah, there she is, okay.
Ms. Circle Levin?
I'm here, thank you.
Ms. Smith?
Lois, I think you're on mute.
Circle back, Mr. Porter?
Present.
Mr. Reggino?
Here.
Chairman Ring?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
She might have something wrong with her audio.
Yeah, we'll come back.
Yeah. Alright, do we have a motion to approve the September minutes?
So moved.
Second? Is there someone to second it?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Alright, um, I'd like to open the public hearing for John Peterson, 16 Dirk Lane. I'd like. Uh, yeah, let me pull up the application here. And. Here's the drawing. I'm not sure if you guys can see this. And, um. Mr. Peterson, if you want to, uh, go ahead and, and describe your project. And I think you're on mute, so let me unmute you. Or you'll have to do it. There you go.
Hello?
Yes.
Can you guys hear us?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. Uh, yeah, so we wanted to put up a six foot wooden fence, a six foot in height. And the variance that we're requesting is a 15 foot setback from the edge of the road, um, not the 30.
In, in the drawing, it's on the left hand side?
Yeah, correct. If you're facing the house, it's on the left hand side.
Yep. I, I think what you're asking for is a height variance, not a distance variance.
Uh, no, it's a distance from the road. Is what we're looking for.
Okay, Jason, that's a front setback, correct?
Yes, that would be, that would be considered the front setback.
So the issue with the front setback is the height, not the distance, correct?
No, we're on a quarter, corner lot, we were told. Both sides constitute frontage.
Yep, that is all true.
That's true.
I thought the issue was the, um, height of the fence.
Yeah.
The issue is the height of the fence being within the 30 feet from the front property line. It can only be four feet for 30 feet back.
Right. Right, so it's, it's a two foot variance he's asking for on the fence.
No, actually, we have a fence permit for a 30 foot, 30 feet setback. We're asking for 15 feet instead of 30.
Yeah, and, and what I'm saying is that's not the issue. The issue is the height of the fence in a front setback can only be four feet. Um, within the first 30 feet. So, what you're really asking for is a two foot variance to allow for a six foot fence in the front setback. That.
Okay, yeah, now I understand. Yep.
Okay.
For the first 30 feet. Understood.
Right.
Okay. Alright, um, is there any one on the phone that would like to have a point of view on this project? We, we did receive one letter, so let me bring up an objection letter just to enter it into the record. Um, can everyone see the letter?
Yep.
Okay, so it basically says, "To my satisfaction, the existing town of Ulster zoning policies regarding setback in construction of building fences and walls has helped maintain a neighborhood consistency and property values. This large development hillside acres is largely consistent of nice open landscaped properties. Last week, I talked with Christina Peterson regarding our objections and concerns regarding the proposed installation of a six foot high solid privacy fence." Proposed six foot high solid privacy fence from my perspective is actually a wall very visible from my property. I object to the request for this variance because I feel it will have a negative impact on the beauty of the neighborhood and a negative impact on my, uh, to my property value. This tall, solid fence wall does not fit the desired nature of what the builders and planned, planners intended for this area. I may be open to assess other options such as a shorter and more translucent fence. Currently, the Peterson's dogs are kept behind a nice four foot high chain link fence that surrounds the swimming pool. Extending this fence would be a more welcome option." So that's the objection that was, um, submitted to the town.
Do you have a response to that rejection?
It, it's just. Who, who was speaking?
Christina Peterson.
Yeah, we wouldn't respond to that. That, this is a public comment, so all it means is that the public can make a comment on your project and we would take, you know, your perspective project and all the comments into consideration when making a decision on granting or denying a variance.
Um, we actually sent in a response to that rejection letter. I was wondering if you had that?
Yes.
Yes, actually, now that you mention it, I believe.
Yes, we all got to see it.
Um. Let me just make sure. Gabby, can you pull that up real quick?
I don't have it on this computer. Unfortunately, I don't have it on this computer. Andy, do you have it on yours by chance to share screen?
Uh, let me pull it up real quick. Okay Gab? Hold on.
Yeah, they didn't load the system on this computer.
Yes, would you like me to read it? I'm sorry, it, it's a little bit long and it's extremely tiny, tiny font. So let me, let me, um, boost it a little bit, okay, so I can see it. I mean, what it basically said was that they went to the, the, the people who had their neighbors and talked about options and stain colors. And the, the reason why they really needed to have it with the dogs and, you know, uh, being the fact that they've got barking dogs and they're trying to just keep it so they're not barking at every single person that goes by on a bicycle and keep some peace to the neighborhood. Would you like me to read it? Um. Would you like me guys to read it or just forward it to you Gabby right now and you can forward it to us?
Um, why, why don't you go ahead and read it so it's part of the record?
Alrighty, hold on, let me, let me boost it so I can see it. Okay, hold on. Come on. Alright. As per the Town of Ulster Building Department Fence Permit, BP number 2020 FP 037, we were granted permission on August 21st, 2020 to install a six foot dog eared wood fence. If we understand correctly, we are currently permitted to install the described fence observing 30 foot fence setback from the edge of the road for storm. Storm maintenance without delay. At the time we applied for the fence permit, we were not aware of the 30 foot setback requirement. In response and after discussion with the building department and the building inspector, we applied for a variance to observe a 15 foot setback and it's, understand that it is the main scheduled topic of discussion for the board hearing. Can I, can I just jump to the part where I think that they're, because they, they, they outlined the whole thing, the, I'll, I'll postpone. The purpose of the request for the variance is to provide our dogs with as much room as possible within the fenced area to run and play. We specified the wooden six foot dog eared fence to provide privacy and containment for our dogs to prevent them from barking at our neighbors as they walk by and from escaping our yard to explore the neighborhood. We have three dogs, two German shepherds and a golden retriever who we consider to be our children. Our shepherds, despite our best efforts, have a habit of barking at people passing by. At our previous residence, we had a six foot dog eared fence that was effective in preventing our dogs from reacting to whatever was going on on the other side. A four foot high chain link fence that the Harshburger suggested will result in our dogs barking and would limit the amount of time they spend outdoors exercising and draining their energy as we would have to call them back inside. It is also our belief that one of our German shepherds may also be able to jump a four foot fence. I have a little dog who can do that. Excuse me, that's off the record. Um, our dogs also love to play ball and a chain link fence will lead to a continuing, continuous instances of the ball going through or over the fence effectively turning us into retrievers, not of the golden type. That's funny. I'm sorry. Um, of importance, our current fence installed around our pool is a combination chain link fence bar fencing that is five foot in height. Please see attached pictures. And currently our dogs bark at passersby and I can see them walking along the road. We are in complete agreement with the Harshburger's opinion regarding the beauty of hillside acres and recognize that it is a popular loop to walk, run and bike. We would like to keep that experience as relaxing and peaceful as possible for our neighbors to enjoy. It is also important for us to maintain good relationships with our neighbors. Oops, oh, sorry, damn it, I hit the wrong button. Um, we did meet with Mr. Harshburger to discuss the fence and understand that their main concern is that a solid fence will obstruct a portion of their view of the neighborhood. In response, we offered to allow them to choose the color of the stain for the fence to blend with the environment. It is our opinion based on our previous, previous experience that the wooden six foot dog eared fence is a necessity to maintain in the health and safety of our dogs and the peace and tranquility of the neighborhood. We would like to move forward seeking approval of a wooden six foot dog eared fence with a 15 foot setback from the. from the edge of the road frontage of the property. Sincerely, John and Christina Peterson. Whew!
Thanks, Andy.
You're welcome. My radio background comes, comes with me. They call that a cold read in the business.
I, I, I do have a question on this. Um, the neighbors, where are they located in proximity to where you want to install the fence?
Uh, I actually sent a picture of their yard and my yard. Unfortunately, we can't see it.
Um- No, I have that, actually.
They are next door.
Yep, next-door neighbors.
Okay.
So they have a yard, a, along their yard, and then there's, uh, how do I explain that?
They're kind of to the back of our property.
Yeah.
But direct neighbors, yes.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone else on the phone that would like to make a comment? Okay, do, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Gabby, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Kolevin?
Uh, that is a I.
Ms. Smith, I believe she's having difficulty answering. Um, Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Reggino?
Yes.
Chairman Ring?
Yes. Okay, is there discussion amongst the board?
Um, I have a question, actually, and this is Andy. Um, how did the conversation go with the neighbor in terms of, um, working something out with the stain? And what, what, were they, were they alright with that, or were they still pretty adamant about not wanting that fence?
Um, I personally had the conversation with, uh, Mr. Harshberger. He, we, it was a very civil conversation. He just felt that it was, um, an obstruction to his view, uh, that it was, he just felt that it was a wall. I tried to explain the safety for the neighbors and the dogs, and just kind of keeping the peace in the environment. Um, I did, you know, when I mentioned the stain color, he didn't, uh, honestly, he didn't really respond. I'd like to follow up with him. I feel that, you know, we can communicate and, you know, there, I don't feel that it's a, you know, negative situation. I, I, and I understand his concern. You know, having, it is very, you know, open, or he has an open view. Um, but I, you know, I thought the, the conversation went okay, but he did not respond to my, um, you know, the, regarding the stain.
Okay, thank you.
Warren, do you have any comments on, on that, from a, um, code enforcement perspective?
No, from my, my perspective, it's, it's pretty straightforward. Um, I will ask if everyone got the email from Jason and read it.
Uh-
No.
I have to look at that.
When was that letter sent?
No, yeah, we got it. No boundary line fences are to be constructed of a height greater than four feet.
Get in here.
This provision is in a deed from Mary Bologna to James Maloney III, Peterson's pre, predecessor entitled dated May 24th, 1984, and this provision runs with the land.
So these, these are the covenances on the property?
Correct.
Yeah, so the covenants-
And that, and that governs most of Hillside Acres, is what, from what that letter came, said.
So those governances, Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, that's a civil, um, thing. It's not, not something that the town can even enforce. It's a civil thing.
That, that's correct, Mr. Chairman. I, um, after reading the letter from the neighbors and the reference to the plan, development of Hillside Acres, um, I thought it was prudent just to look into it. Yes, there is a restricted covenant, limiting boundary line fences to four feet. I provide that to the board as a point of information. Uh, the town doesn't take a position on the enforceability of these covenants. The town does not enforce them. That's purely a civil matter. You should base your decision based on the typical elements that you review when deciding an area of variance. I just thought on background, you should be aware of that.
No, that's good. Thank, thank you for taking the time to, uh, to look into that. Warren, do you know if we have any other six-foot fences in Hillside Acres?
If you travel, um, down Arnold to Laney Lane, we have an eight-foot fence, eight feet from the road. To this day, I don't, I, to this day, I have no idea how it got installed.
We do actually have a six-foot white vinyl fence installed on Dirk Lane in a backyard, across the street from us.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I seen that right across the street. There's a, there's a white vinyl fence, right?
Yes.
Yep.
None of those are on the front, uh, along what would be quote-unquote-
They are not front.
The front. Because I think you are allowed six feet on the back, correct?
Well, but my, my point is that the covenances on the property say that no fence in any place can be higher than four feet. So, so that's a covenant that is part of the deed to the property.
I, I have another, um, question, if I may, is, did you think about other options that wouldn't require a, a variance that would be a, uh, something, you know, like a chain-link fence, and then you, you can use screenings that go along those four-foot fences, and then plant a row of arborvitaries either before or after, to create a green screen?
We have, we have, we've, um, actually considered the bar fencing that we have around the pool is, which is significantly more in cost. Um, we've considered chain-link fence, but in, uh, in some opinions, it would be seen to be less attractive than a wooden fence.
Right, I bet it. Yeah.
So we have looked into other options.
Okay.
And again, for the, you know, the peace and tranquility of the neighborhood, we thought a privacy fence would be good. It, again, it worked well with our last residence.
Okay, thank you.
The eight-foot fence I referenced was in a front setback, by the way.
And, and they have a variance for it, or is that an out-of-code fence?
Far as I can, excuse me, far as I can tell, it's an out-of-code fence.
Okay, so that one, we, we're not even going to talk about then. So the, the, the purpose of this board is to take into considerations all the factors involved, whether or not there are legal laws of the town. We also take into consideration neighborhood and neighbors' perspectives, and in this case, I think it's appropriate to take into consideration covenances that are in place in property. Um, and I, I only say that, I only say that because there's a level of expectation when purchasing a home, that there are covenances and the covenances are adhered to. Although I also recognize that the covenances were probably written thirty, forty, fifty years ago when the Hillside Acres, um, properties were developed. Um, but since they run with the land, that says that the covenant is in place in perpetuity. And, and the reason I point that out is, in my neighborhood, I'm required to store my garbage in a metal garbage can, for instance. Well, nobody has metal garbage cans. We all have the, uh, plastic ones, so times do change, but the purpose of this board is to take into consideration all of this information.
Okay.
So i- is there, is there more discussion from the board?
So, uh, basically, what we're looking for is a, as a variance on the fence from two feet?
Two-foot height variance, correct.
And the, uh, the setback isn't the, isn't what's up for discussion here, right, or?
By the town code, they could install a six-foot fence thirty-point XX feet from the front setback, by the town code, and that's what we would be discussing. If they were putting that fence thirty-point XX feet from the front setbacks, we wouldn't be here today. Now, their neighbor, because of the covenances, could go and do something civil, but that's not, that has nothing to do with us.
Okay.
Also, if they were installing a four-foot fence fifteen feet from the road, we wouldn't be having this discussion.
Correct.
That's correct.
It's the neighbors on Sherry Lane that don't want the fence, correct?
Correct.
Are those the only neighbors? Have you spoken to anybody else?
Um- I have spoken to, uh, two other neighbors, and they, uh, the one directly across from us, and the one on the other side of the house from us, and they do not have a problem with the fence whatsoever, but, um, again, it does, um, you know, they're not, um, the back end.
Right.
That neighbor does, you know, does want an open view.
Yeah.
I have a question. So putting it fifteen feet, and I'm only looking because I'm looking at Google Maps, because I really don't have a drawing, a, a real scale drawing. How far would fifteen feet be from the actual street? Because you seem to have quite a bit of property there. Would the fifteen feet make that big a difference if you set it back some?
I did send a picture, um, in, uh, we, shortly after our, our first board meeting.
Got it.
Yeah.
It, it with red outline of, and it's as approximate as we could get to what it would visually actually look like.
Okay, we'll have to go back.
I, I would say a rough estimate is it, it doubles the area, if you go an additional fifteen feet out.
In length, yeah.
And, uh, how much space would you say there's between the end of that fence to your neighbor's driveway? Because there's quite a bit of land there also, right?
There is. I'd say that's probably fifty feet, maybe forty feet.
Fifty to forty feet. That fence wouldn't bother his, his line of sight coming out of the driveway or anything like that, right?
No, no.
Not at all.
We actually had the building inspector come out, and that's one of the things we distinctly looked at.
Okay.
Uh-oh. You alright?
All right.
Okay. I'm looking at the picture right now, Mr. Chairman. It's pretty wide open.
Me too.
We house, the next-door neighbor's house, and visually trying to figure out fifteen feet, but it looks like it's about twenty feet off the road by itself, maybe? Two cars are right on top of each other before we hit the garage, and one's almost in the road, so, I don't know. I don't see that as being such a big deal, unless you just like wide-open spaces.
Yeah, I was trying to, I thought that we had the, the photo, but I don't, I don't see it.
It's in the letter from Jason. I have it on my iPad, so I can't, I write off across it on my Mac. So really love my pay grade. Hi, puppy.
Sorry. I lost you.
Or cannot.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see it, um, real handy here.
I ha- I have mine in front of me, but I can't really.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at, too, the same one she has. Um, it's at the three forty-five, three forty-five from Gabriella, an email, I believe.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't see it, so.
Oh, it's, it's yesterday. It's under Jason and Gabriella. I mean, if you, that's the title of the email.
It was originally sent on nine sixteen from Gab. Gabby sent it to us on nine sixteen, and it says, forward fifteen Dirk Lane.
Yep, and she did a restart, yes.
Oh, there we go. Yeah. All right. Um-
I'm going to mute you guys. I'm getting like-
I, I can't bring this up. Anyway.
Alright.
All right, so we've discussed it amongst the board. Is there more discussion, or are we ready to make a, a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'm going to second that. Okay, Gabby, can we call the roll call?
Mr. Kolevin? Andy, you're muted.
I feel like we can, I, I feel like we can-
There we go.
A happy medium here, but I, I will vote yes.
Okay, Ms. Smith, I'm getting texts from her, and she says yes. Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Ring?
I, I'm going to say no.
Oh, and Mr. Reggino, I apologize on this one.
Yes. Okay, so it's approved. All right, so if you follow up with Gabby after, um, tomorrow and the next day, she'll give you the next steps on what, what you need to do to, um, to put the fence up.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'd like to open the public hearing for Ian McGrew.
Hello?
Hi, Ian. So, you were here last month to talk about your fence, and so this is the public hearing portion of that, where you just want to go and describe your project again, and I should have, um, I should have your application up here. Let me grab this up here. And while I do that, why don't you go ahead and just describe your project?
Yeah, we, uh, we're basically just building a, about, pretty much doubling the size of our patio. Uh, our patio was about four hundred square feet, uh, just a paver patio. And, uh, we have had a six-foot fence around it. That six-foot fence is ten feet, eleven inches from the road. Um, and fro- from Plainfield Street, uh, it's thirty-seven feet from Southfield Street. And, uh, we are, basically blew out the patio into the little bit of the yard. Uh, we're continuing that same path of the fence on Plainfield Street, so it'll be the same ten feet, eleven inches from, from the curb. Um, I have pictures. If, if I could share my screen, I have updated pictures.
Yep, absolutely. Why don't you go ahead?
One by one second. Uh, host-disabled attendees sharing?
Uh, let's see. Well... Oh, I have the, allow participants to share screen is checked, so you should be able to. There you go.
So this is how it stands now. You, you guys can see this?
Yes.
Okay.
So this is how it stands now. Uh, if you see in the lower left-hand corner, uh, this is the curb here.
Yep.
Um, and we're basically just looking to extend the fence that was already there. There, the, the fence, from where the fence is currently, it went straight to basically where the gutter is. And we're just extending it. Uh, it's like roughly eighteen feet farther out.
Yep.
And then just another angle from same side, but looking towards Southfield Street.
Okay, that is a good perspective. Thank you. All right, since this is a, a public comment period, is any of the public would like to, uh, ask questions or make a comment? All right, since this is a, a public comment period, is any of the public would like to ask questions or make a comment?
Hi, I'd like to make a comment.
Go ahead, Bruce.
Bruce. Okay, in the first picture, I'm in the red house next door to Ian and Adam. And I just want to say they're good neighbors. Ian built a fence between our backyard and their yard. And we had a tortoise that used to crawl under the fence into their garden. He, he made the fence so it was tortoise-proof, so you know, he did really nice work, makes really good fences. And I just would like to voice my approval for this project.
All right. Thank you, Bruce.
Yeah, you bet.
Okay.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Yes.
Hi.
All right, do we have discussion amongst the board on the fence?
Looks pretty straightforward to me.
All right, is there a motion then? Go ahead, Bob.
Cricket says yes.
Bob, did you have a question?
The second Cricket's version.
Okay, now is, is there a motion on the table?
I'll make a motion to approve his, his fence.
And I'll second Kevin's.
All right, Gabby, can you call the roll?
Mr. Golevin?
I will happily approve that. I drive by all the time and the property looks beautiful. You guys are doing a great job.
Ms. Smith? I have to wait. Mr. Got a thumbs up, Mr. Smith, Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Reggino?
Yes.
Chairman Ring?
Yes. All right, enjoy your fence.
It looks nice. It looks beautiful. You guys are doing a great job.
Thank you very much.
All right, let me share my screen again.
Thanks, guys. Have a good night.
Thanks, Ian.
Adios.
All right, onto the preliminary hearing. So I'd like to open the preliminary hearing for Albany Seven LLC, Dino Ritchie. If you recall, Mr. Ritchie was before us two months ago, maybe it was last month.
Last month.
He was discussing a project on Ulster Avenue and he's looking for options. He's since gone to the planning board who's given him some better options. They've revised the planning and they're coming back with a different variance. The use variance is, the variance is a use variance to allow for multiple apartments above a non-residential structure. And Gabby, can you tell me what the specific use variance is on this property? Is it for the number of apartments or is it apartment on the above non-residential?
It's for apartments above a non-residential structure. I believe there's one apartment there currently and I think he was proposing nine. And it's also an area variance proposing a six-foot, well, a six-foot requested difference. So he wants it twenty-four feet from the front property line instead of the thirty. So he has the use and the area going.
Okay, so before, his original request was something like to be seven feet from the road? And he's, so he's moved that way back to twenty-four feet from the road?
Correct.
I thought he was keeping the same footprint that was there now.
He was, and we, we gave him some guidance and he went back to the planning and they, the planning board, I believe, has worked out a solution that's agreeable. But Jason, can you give some background of the planning board if you were there on this property?
I don't know if this was at the planning board.
No, it was at a planning board workshop.
I thought, he, he did reach out to me because he, he has a friend who, who I know. And I told him I really couldn't discuss it with him and he said, well, I did do a workshop and I was on it. And I haven't seen a plan. Is there a plan, Gabby, that was sent? I don't see anything that was drawn out.
I believe I sent it. I want to say, I know I sent out the application yesterday and I can't remember if I received digital.
Yeah, because I, I haven't seen anything about the updated plan that he wanted to do. Yeah, I don't, I didn't see that.
I have a few points to add.
Go ahead.
Okay, the use variance is for a multifamily, four or more units in this zoning district.
It's for, Warren, before you go on, it's for the number of apartments, right? To increase the number of apartments for the coverage of the, the area, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Dwelling units above a non-residence is a permitted use in this district, special permit from town board. It's the number of units that is not permitted.
Right.
Okay, I was at the planning board workshop with the town planner and the planning board chairman. So he has reconfigured to move the building back and he's working on his parking to meet the parking criteria of the town code. The building will be expanding towards the rear and towards the south. So the only non-conformance is the front setback, which he has moved back farther than originally planned.
That's from fifteen to twenty-four feet, correct?
It's currently at twenty-four feet, right? The building that's standing now is at twenty-four feet even though it's supposed to be thirty feet. Is that correct?
The age of the, yes, the age of the building predates our zoning.
Right, but right now, because when he told me, he said, well, I'm going to keep it where it is so I don't have to go back to a setback.
That, that is correct. The fact that he's enlarging the building is why we have to address that variance. If he kept the exact same footprint, he's allowed to do that.
Right.
Okay. All right, so let's hear from the architect on this. Zero, would you mind describing the project and what was discussed at the, the planning workshop? Zero, I, I can't hear you.
It doesn't look like he's connected to any sort of audio.
Yeah, I think that he's on the nine-one-four areas.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Can we hear me?
Yes, sir.
Great, so if you let me share my screen, I'll show you the site plans. I have that on my screen.
All right, yes, that'd be great.
Can you see it?
No.
Negative.
All right, I have it right on my screen. I don't know if you can share my screen with the rest of the folks.
You need to click the share screen on the bottom.
Okay. Share screen, okay.
Do you have it?
It doesn't seem, it doesn't seem to be working. I'm trying to click allow, but it's not doing it. Share screen. It's not doing it. Well, I can continue on with the discussion that the other folks previously talked about. There's two, there's two parcels there and the intent is to eliminate the property line between the two, the two parcels, the smaller one and the larger one, so it becomes just one parcel. What we're trying to do is maintain the, if you're standing on Albany Avenue looking at the property, we're trying to maintain the front right corner of the original building, which would be ten feet from the side property line and twenty-four feet back from the front property line. So we are orienting our front right corner of the new building in the same location as the front right corner of the existing building. And from there, we're going to, we're looking to construct a, the sixty by one-hundred-foot laundromat on the first floor. At the rear of the laundromat would be a single-story handicapped accessible parking with handicap parking associated with the apartment and also with the laundromat. And then we have, there's a building at the rear which would main, which we would maintain. The roadway around that building is going to be maintained and we're, we're also providing parking on the right side, left side and rear property line of the building. We have sixty parking spaces, which I'm pretty sure is the required amount. I did a schedule in the, on the first sheet drawing SP one, which shows the parking table. The building, the second drawing that I submitted, drawing A one, shows the first floor plan of the laundromat and the handicapped accessible parking at the rear of the first floor and also shows the second floor with the eight one-bedroom units on the second floor. The third drawing, which is drawing A two, shows the four exterior elevation views of the, of the proposed building. So the area variance is for the six-foot variance on the front and the use variance is for the apartments on the second floor. The building in its current configuration was, had several additions built onto it. And I believe, and the owners tried to lease it as a restaurant, but it was kind of broken up. You know, plus that the, the virus kind of put some hardships on most of the restaurant owners and I believe they're still kind of limited in their seating capacity. Plus, the way that floor plan was laid out of the existing building wasn't really conducive for, for what, what people in this modern times are looking for in terms of restaurants, especially, you know, the, the national chains. You know, they've got large screen TVs, they've got sports, you know, being telecast. They've got open bar areas where you can look across, you know, slower partitions. May, may see a friend of yours or whatever. They have booth seating and so on. This, this existing building had multiple levels and just was kind of broken up too much. The owner had done some research, found that there was a demand for, for laundromat in the area and also somewhat of a demand for apartments in the area. So that's how this proposal came about. Also, they would have to open up the street and bring in a larger water service to provide water for the, for the laundromat. And, and since that work is being done, then the apartments also require a sprinkler system that's based on New York State Code. So the, so the service would have to be upgraded, the water service would have to be upgraded to, to provide sprinkler system for the apartments and also the water supply for the laundromat. So in order to justify, you know, the cost of all this, the owners of African feels that the, the apartments would help justify the cost or help pay for the cost. While the rest of the participation in the laundromat would take time to build, you know, build participation from the neighborhood. So that's pretty much it in the, in a nutshell.
So the, the planning workshop, the planning workshop exists to give guidance and help to applicants as they're beginning the planning phase, but before it's submitted to the planning board. What guidance did they give you?
I only went to, I went to one of the workshops, the owner of the Aspen's on, he might be able to talk to more about it. The guidance that they gave us was, I guess in terms of, you know, the, the parking and the setback and, you know, the use variance. Now, this, the plan that you're showing there is an older plan. We've actually have, I've submitted a couple of weeks ago, a more, a more updated site plan that shows the setback in the front further back.
Okay, I, I don't have that one, but you're talking about this front cor, anchoring the front corner twenty-four feet?
Yeah, right where your cursor is, that front corner is the existing building. We're moving it back, the proposed building back to that corner.
Where you, where this was fifteen feet here, you're moving it back to the twenty-four feet? So you're moving it back nine feet from the original proposed?
Correct.
Jason, just looking for some guidance here. I still feel like this is, this is a premature to come before the zoning board. Looking for some guidance on it here.
Typically, these applications are filed at the same time, one with planning board for site plan and one for the zoning board for a variance, if a variance is necessary. So in that respect, it's a little premature to see if a use variance is required or should be granted because you don't have a final plan in front of you as to what is going to happen at this property.
Right. And, and the major issue here, i- if we can, you know, speak freely here, the, the issue here is really the setback more so than the, the use. The use is, is one discussion, but the location of the building in relation to Albany Avenue and the desire for the nine W cleanup corridor plan, that's really the issue here. And, and frankly, I would like, I would like the planning board. I, I'd like to see some final drawings with, where the planning board says, hey, I think we can, we can fix all of the issues. We would just need a X variance to accommodate the plan. So personally, I feel this is premature to come before the zoning board.
The only thing I might add is that the reason they're doing this is would they go through the expense and, and to draw up everything, to go to the planning board, to get approved, to then get denied to go forward with the project. That's the reason for the, the, the use and location, area variance.
I, yeah, and, and I get that, and, and I get that. I personally don't have that much issue with the use, given the desire to have additional apartments in Kingston, given the demand and the things that we've already done around the nine W quarter. It's really the location of the building and whether or not, you know, in large part, Warren, what you think on the location of the building being six foot from, from where we would really want it?
I, I have a question about existing, what, what exists now? Because where it is now is one thing. Once the building comes down and they, he thinks that he can put it back at the same place. That's not considered grandfathered once the building comes down. Am I correct in that?
Correct. Once, once the footprint's down, it, it's not grandfathered.
Then it's not grandfathered, the, the setback is not grandfathered. Okay, thank you.
Same footprint is. He's proposing to enlarge the building. If he took the building down and put it in the exact same footprint, it's pre-existing.
But, but because he's going to change the footprint altogether, then all the setbacks and everything, it's a, a fresh new start, correct?
Right, you can't anchor it in the same location, like put a wall on top of the old wall and consider that grandfathered. That's, you know, that's what I think we're talking about.
Well, that's very helpful because as they design it moving forward, yeah, that's great. Okay.
Warren, what's your view on this twenty-four feet versus thirty feet?
The twenty-four feet is actually closer to compliance with a lot of the existing buildings on that side of Ulster Avenue.
Yep.
It will help to increase sightlines. You know, this is extremely, this current building is extremely close. So moving it back that distance there will allow for the, on the south side exit for a better sightline northbound.
The sign for the buildings next door is more of a problem.
One, one property at a time. And, and so that's the discussion on this property. What do you recommend moving forward?
Are you talking to me again?
No, Jason.
Okay.
Well, do we have a final proposal from the applicant?
Well, define final, because until it goes through the planning board, it's not.
Do we have a final submitted application? Do we know what he wants to do? I, I would suggest you file a site plan application with the planning board and start the planning board process. I think this project is going to need a lot of help and advice from.
help and advice from the planning board, from our planning consultant. You know, Jeffrey, I agree with you that is the use really isn't the issue. Um, it's really the area, area variance that is um, a question, and, and it, it might work out, but uh, I think really this should go to the planning board. And it might be premature to move this to a public hearing.
Yeah.
Well, I understand. We tabled this, correct?
We did.
I tabled it actually. And I don't think Robert's rules of order, I think Andy was going to say, I'm not going to take it off the table. It's not ready to go. Right, Andy? I'm not taking it off.
I think you're right.
Until they get something from the planning board. It's just, I'm seeing different things here. I don't have anything current.
I agree.
At, at the same time, you know, there, there's a couple of things in play. One is we have an applicant that would like to improve a property that is an issue. Again, I don't fundamentally have a problem with the use. We'd have to look at the details, but that's not my fundamental issue. It's the, the closeness, but you know, I don't see that as an absolute no today with what I see. So I think the applicant should go through the planning board and get a complete set of, you know, a list of all the things that they need to do or recommendations. And we have a final um, a, a, a final pictorial view of, of where that building is actually going to sit based on what the planning recommends. And, and then we vote on the, the two zoning issues, if there's only two at that point. So I, I agree with you. We, I, I think we should table this until, until the applicant has a, a, a better discussion and a final drawing.
Okay, so the, you're going to keep it on table until
Yep.
we go to the planning board, get their comments, address some of their comments, uh, get a final list of what, what we need to do. And if they say we need to, you know, they'll, they'll probably more, you know, one of their determinations would be that we need these variances, or if we do need the variances. Then we come back to the variant, to the zoning board, and that's when you'll hear it.
Yes, yep. And I, I'm not saying this, I don't want to discourage you from this project because I think, you know, on, from what I see, the project, you know, could be valuable for both the landowner and the town. And, you know, I, I think that it just needs to have the details worked out on where things are located and where best we can fit this in, in, you know, a suboptimal piece of property. So I don't want to discourage the, the applicant from moving forward with the project by saying, no, we're absolutely not going to do, you know, not going to consider something, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Is that fair? Hello? Lois, did you have something?
I did. I, I may have missed it though. Is, I was there today around the back of the building. Is there a reason why you can't move the building back? And use the property behind the building that you would have to um, go closer to the road? And, and I'm not challenging you. I, I'm truly asking you why the building can't go back because that other smaller building, you said, won't be there. And even if it was there, it appears, if you turn it into the one lot like you're proposing, it appears that it may have enough room, but I, I don't know. So that's, my question is, why isn't the building being moved back since you're starting from scratch anyway?
Oh, well, I did submit drawings. I don't, don't understand why you don't have them to see. Uh, but we did move it back and we've got about twenty-four feet of clearance from the corner of the rear of this built, the proposed building. For vehicle circulation around the rear building. Now, I can look at possibly moving it back even further. Um, we just don't want to restrict the movement for vehicle traffic around the rear of the, of the building, that's at the rear of the property. But I can take a look at that. We'll take a look at it and see if we can
On the right side, where the flower Blooming Boutique is feet on the right side, correct? So you have twenty feet behind and you'll have ten feet next to Blooming Boutique and you said earlier in reference, um, on your opening statement that you would be using that area for parking as well. So I don't know, I don't see how you would use a ten-foot space for parking. And again, I'm not challenging you. I'm just asking you questions about why the building cannot go back. So
Last, last time they said that there is a required handicap parking spot for the first floor apartment, which is required for over the home, it is eight or nine apartments in the same complex. And that was where the um, handicap parking space was slated to be. And that's why they couldn't move it back. That was my understanding from my notes from, from the call last month.
There's also the issue of fire apparatus access. You don't want to put the two buildings too close together. So if you take the, if you take the new building and shift it back, you push it closer to the remaining building. And you restrict fire apparatus getting to the rear building on more than one side.
And the rear building going to be used as an accessory apartment or what's the proposal?
The ice cream place.
Jane's Ice Cream.
Jane's Ice Cream.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, 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 I think Can anybody hear me? You raise a, a bunch of good points and I think that's why we need the planning board to look at this, because
Hello, can anybody hear me? I think that's Mr. Ritchie. Yes, we can hear you. Sorry, guys. I'm, I'm at my wife's office here and uh, I, I'm not too accustomed to uh, this apparatus.
I'm right there with you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Hey, Lois, how are you? I, I, I wanted to respond to you. I, I thought that my engineer gave all accurate plans for all this new stuff and I don't know why. I'm sorry, none of you guys have that. I thought maybe you, we submitted all that and you guys have it all to look at and uh, I was hoping you saw that. The Jane's Ice Cream i- is our new manufacturing facility. We want to move in the back to that back building. So that's going to be the new facility for Jane's. And uh, the way we have it configured with the parking spaces needed, uh, the footprint kind of works out the way we have it laid out. I'm sorry, you don't, you guys have those plans to visualize right at the moment.
We'll take a look at all the comments. We'll go to the planning board and we'll uh, see if we can work out whatever we can with them. And uh, you know, if we can't move it back, if we move back even a couple of feet, that would reduce our request for the variance from six feet to four feet maybe, but uh, we'll see how, we'll try to work out as much of this as we can with the planning board before we come back to the zoning board.
That, that'd be great. And Gabby, if you can find any of the documents that may have been sent in and forward them out tomorrow, that would be great.
Yeah, I could have swore I sent them out, but I'm going to double check tomorrow when I get into work.
Okay.
Good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Interante.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
All right, is there anything else from the board tonight? All right, I, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Aye. All right, thank you.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.